Mayor, thank you very much. Please join me in prayer. Most gracious heavenly Father, we ask for your continued blessings on Madeira Beach and its citizens. We ask that you continue to guide this commission with your wisdom and guidance with the decisions that are made that will affect the lives of everyone here in the city. We always ask this in your name. Amen.
Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Palladino?
Here.
Commissioner Schatz?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Here.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Here.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the provided minutes.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any additions or corrections? With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion from the commission? Is there any comments from staff? With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
All right, next presentations. Fire Chief Darryl O'Neal, I believe you have a presentation that needs to be made?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mayor's Misses. It's always going to be a great pleasure to present to you our firefighter of the year. This award is one that shouldn't be taken lightly because it's not someone who was selected by the fire chief. It is actually someone who was selected by their peers to represent them in the upcoming year. This year's award recipient epitomizes what it means to be a Madeira Beach firefighter. He takes great pride in his service to our community and does a great job overall with his peers and with the community at large. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce to you driver engineer Ryan Roberts. Our firefighter of the year. Mayor, would you like to come down and present the certificate?
Well firefighter Ryan, would you like to address the crowd or the commission? This is your chance, brother.
Thanks to you guys, thanks to the mayor and the city manager and the commissioners for making it such a great place to work. Appreciate it. I had a forty-five minute speech, but I liked it.
I've got to tell the commission and I'm sure your family and friends, and I know everybody at the station knows this, I've had the opportunity to work with firefighter Roberts here and you know how he got this award, guys? The man fishes and he brings a ton of fish and grouper in every night. He bought his fellow firefighters and his fire chief through their stomach.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Take care, brother.
Good job.
And if y'all would like to leave, I'll give everybody a couple of minutes unless you would like to sit through the meeting, which you can sit through the meeting, so that's up to y'all.
Run.
Yeah.
Come on, it's not that bad.
Okay, we'll make it quick if that's where we're going to go. All right, next, public comment. Would anybody like to make public comment this evening? All right, moving on. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I say move, Mr. Mayor.
I have a second.
I have a motion, a second. Mr. City Manager, is there any comments from staff?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just so we know what we're approving tonight, the item number one is forty-six thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars. That's the cost for the upgrade for the largest possible palm trees that we can put on our medians on Gulf Boulevard. And I think you had seen the emails circulating that we don't want to just put some, for lack of a better term, chintzy tree up there. We wanted to have as complete and tall of a tree as we possibly could. So that's the upgrade. There's money in the budget for that and we'd recommend their approval. And then items number two and three is the necessary amounts needed to be approved to get the engineering going on those two road projects. All recommended for approval by staff.
All right, thank you. Is there any further comments or questions from the commission? Is there any further comments from the audience? With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
All right, next contracts and agreements. Mr. City Manager, would you please go through contract number one? I'm having a little problem on my screen here.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to defer to the city attorney if you want.
Okay.
You've got before you a conflict letter that's prepared by bond counsel Bryant Miller and Olive. This conflict letter is provided to you to obtain a signature authorization to use Bryant Miller and Olive for the closing that's going to take place in just a couple of weeks for the acquisition of the ladder truck. The letter has been prepared to advise you that Bryant Miller and Olive has one of its law partners on the board of the bank that was ultimately chosen for this transaction. That is Hancock Whitney Bank. And doing their due diligence, Bryant Miller and Olive wanted to make sure that you were aware of that, although they were not involved in the procurement and their law partner, who is the board member, has no involvement with the loan process, they wanted to make sure that that's brought to your attention. So the letter is here for the mayor to sign after it's been authorized by the commission so that BMO can continue being the bond counsel for the upcoming closing that's going to take place in two weeks. You have in the audience also Attorney Draper handling the bond closing. He'll be here to answer questions relative to the resolutions later on in the agenda, but if you have additional questions about this particular matter, I think that he would be able to answer them as well. I recommend the authorization to sign the conflict letter.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I say move, Mr. Mayor.
I have a second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any questions or discussion from the commission?
That's pretty cut and dry.
Is there any comments from the audience? With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
All right, next agreement, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, I'm going to handle that one as well. Before you are three agreements. They're sub-grant agreements. These are the agreements that allow the city to fund through the funds that it receives from FEMA in the flood mitigation assistance program to provide for these homes to become floodproof. You'll notice their names are blocked out, their addresses are blocked out, and that's because of the fact that under the Privacy Act of nineteen seventy-four FEMA does not allow the publication of that information. Obviously, we have it and we're working with these people, but if you look in the packet and see this blacked out, that's the reasons why. The staff is recommending approval of these three agreements. Again, this is passed through money that the city receives. It's not money that the city is actually funding for these projects. There are three recipients in the package here today. So we need authorization for the mayor to execute these three flood mitigation assistance agreements.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
A second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion or questions from the commission? Is there any comments from the audience? With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
All right, unfinished business, we have none, so on to new business. Resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero three, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero three, resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the City of Madeira Beach Fees and Collection Procedures Manual to reflect the fee revisions to Article Two, Community Services, Article Three, Finance, Article Five, Recreation, Article Six, Public Works, and Article Seven, Marina, and providing for an effective date. That was reading a resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero three by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass resolution two zero one six dash zero three.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any comments from staff?
Recommendations for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any further questions from the commission? Is there any further comments from the audience? With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
All right, resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero four, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero four, resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, adopting an inventory of city-owned fee simple property and determining no such public property is appropriate of use as affordable housing, providing for distribution, providing for an effective date. That was reading a resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero four by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass the resolution two oh one six dash oh four.
A second, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
Recommendations for approval, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Is there any comments from the audience? With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Next, resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero five, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero five, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Madeira Beach, approving the entrance into an interlocal agreement with other governmental participants for the purposes of exercising investment power jointly to invest funds in concert with other participants in providing for an effective date hereof. That was reading a resolution twenty sixteen dash zero five by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to pass the resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero five.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Mr. City Managers, are there any comments from staff?
Staff is here to answer any questions. Otherwise, staff recommendations for approval.
Is there any questions from the commission? Is there any further comments from the audience? With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Next, resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero six, Mr. City Attorney, please read
by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero six, resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the fiscal year twenty sixteen budget by transferring general fund appropriations from the Community Development Department to the Public Works Department, increasing general fund expenditures in the amount of four thousand four hundred dollars and providing for an effective date. That was reading a resolution twenty sixteen dash zero six by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution twenty sixteen dash six be adopted.
I have a second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
Again, staff is here to answer any questions. Otherwise, staff recommendations for approval.
Is there any further comments from the audience? With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Next, this time I'll entertain a motion for authorization of pay plans.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
Again, staff's here for any questions you may have. Otherwise, city manager's recommendations for approval.
Is there any further comments from the audience? With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Next, at this time I'll entertain a motion for authorization of pay plans.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
Again, we're here to answer any questions. Otherwise, the city manager's recommendations for approval.
What is, excuse me, what is the authorization of pay plan?
What you're approving in two thousand six, resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh seven is some additional help in the building department as we're learning how much it, what the workload is and the number of hours it took not only to just bring the building department home, but then employ the short-term rental and the rental inspection ordinance and so on and so forth. All very good legislation, but it's taking up a lot of man-hours and we don't want to fall behind. And so I'm, you know how I am about hiring, this is where we fall short and the building department can certainly afford it. And so I'm asking for some additional help in the building department for inspection purposes and such.
Sorry, my iPad this weekend would not function.
Oh, okay.
Either that or the operator wasn't. Not sure which.
Not a problem. So again, that's what you did there in two thousand sixteen dash oh seven was just provide, that's a prorated amount to get us through this fiscal year and then we'll add it into the budget next year.
And Mr. City Manager, if it's okay with you, if I could ask the finance director a question, he might have the answer, he might not, but maybe I could get an answer at the next meeting. And right now, I'd just like to currently know where the building department's at. I know the revenue at one point, but I know there's a lot going on, so I don't know if the revenue's changed in the last several months.
The revenue is currently right on staff expectations for the current fiscal year, but the funding for that position would come from prior year reserves.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Finance Director.
If you remember too, when we've gone through this exercise before, that the building department revenue can only be spent on X, Y, and Z, and so this is a good utilization of those funds and certainly lets Frank sleep a little easier at night. And it's definitely warranted. Again, I think, I hope my track record with you and how I hire people or add to the payroll has proven that I'm pretty shy about doing that, but this is definitely a need that we have to have.
All right, is there any further comments? City clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Next, resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero eight, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero eight, a resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the fiscal year twenty sixteen budget by increasing local option sales tax fund expenditures in the amount of forty thousand dollars and providing for an effective date. That was reading a resolution twenty sixteen dash zero eight by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass resolution two zero one six dash zero eight.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
Any questions can be directed towards Mr. Talia. He's got this all in line and walked me through it today. City manager's recommendation and your finance director's recommendations for approval.
Is there any further comments? With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
All right, next, at this time I'll entertain a motion for authorization of expenditures.
I'll make the motion for authorization of expenditures.
I'll second it, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion, a second. Mr. City Manager, would you like to go ahead and make a comment on this, or would you like the finance director to take care of that?
It's self-explanatory. So we kind of walked you through it relatively thoroughly at the last meeting. You know, Mr. Talia can answer any questions, but obviously this is to, basically you're approving the expenditures to purchase the apparatus. The apparatus chief is probably a year out-ish. So just because you're approving the expenditure tonight, don't expect to see a new ladder truck in the garage here or in the bays in the next, you know, thirty or sixty days, but by then, I think everything will come to a head in regards to other negotiations and contracts with possible other cities, and then we'll have to make a decision on whether or not to sell or trade one of the oldest existing fire truck. But right now, we're going to hold on to it and obviously we have a year's worth of left time, if you will, to do that. So again, city manager's recommendation and the finance director's recommendation is for approval.
All right, is there any questions from the commission? Is there any further comments from the audience? With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Next, resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero nine, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero nine, a resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the fiscal year twenty sixteen budget by increasing local option sales tax fund revenues and expenditures in accordance with Florida infrastructure sales surtax revenue note, increasing corresponding debt service fund expenditures and providing for an effective date. That was reading a resolution twenty sixteen dash zero nine by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we pass resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero nine.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if you read that wording, there's about as clear as mud, but Vince walked me through that today as well. Mr. Talia can answer any questions, but based off of his recommendation, city manager's recommendation is for approval.
All right, is there any further comment? With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, resolution two thousand sixteen dash ten, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
These are the two resolutions, this one and the next one, that Mr. Draper's in the audience and he can answer questions relative to this if I can't. I'll read resolution twenty sixteen dash ten by title only. Resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in aggregate principal amount of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, infrastructure sales surtax revenue note, series two thousand sixteen. For the purposes of financing and/or reimbursing the designing, permitting, acquisition, construction, reconstruction, and equipping of various capital projects described herein, pledging local government infrastructure sales surtax revenues to secure payment of the principal of and interest on such note, making certain covenants and agreements for the benefit of the holders of such note, expressing an intent to be reimbursed with proceeds of such note, designating such note as bank-qualified, authorizing certain officials and employees of the city to take all actions required in connection with the sale, issuance, and delivery of such note, providing certain other matters in connection therewith, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of resolution two thousand sixteen dash ten by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution twenty sixteen dash ten be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I'm a mayor or city commissioner, I'm asking three questions. How much are we borrowing, at what interest rate, and for how long? And I think it's not to exceed seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. The interest rate, Vince, one point five nine percent, and not to exceed forty-two months, three to three and a half years, was that the term?
The term matches the remaining installments of the penny for Pinellas, so I think December of twenty nineteen is the final charity.
So, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, again, nothing to sneeze at, seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars is a decent chunk of cash, but compared to what we've bonded or borrowed for in the past, this is a relatively small and short-term note to, and at that interest rate, it's certainly advantageous to go that route. So finance director's recommendation certainly for approval, so is mine, and then again, Attorney Draper's in the audience if anybody has any technical questions.
And my understanding is there was money in the vehicle replacement fund. It was just doing it this way to go ahead and keep that capital there so, but it's a better use.
Flexibility.
Right, thank you.
I was putting up this tax for collateral, is that what this is all about?
Pardon? No, it's not a tax.
Putting up this tax that's mentioned in here?
Yeah.
Infrastructure sales surtax and all that, is that what we're doing?
Yeah, we're pledging the remaining installments of the penny for Pinellas tax.
Okay.
The local option sales tax fund.
Okay.
Is there any further comment? With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
All right, resolution two thousand sixteen dash eleven, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, resolution two thousand sixteen dash eleven, a resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, supplementing a resolution adopted on even date hereof to fix certain details in connection with the issuance of its not-to-exceed-seven-hundred-twenty-five-thousand on infrastructure sales surtax revenue note, series twenty sixteen, providing for other covenants with respect to the note holder, providing certain other matters in connection therewith, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of resolution two thousand sixteen dash eleven by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this commission pass resolution number two thousand sixteen dash eleven.
I'll second it.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this resolution, resolution number eleven, just kind of goes hand in glove with the previous resolution. Staff recommendation, city manager's recommendations for approval.
Is there any comment from the audience? With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
All right, reports and correspondence, first thing I'd like to bring up at our past mayor's council meeting, the mayor of St. Pete, Mayor Kreisman, is brought forth to meeting, the Mayor of St. Pete, Mayor Kreisman, is brought forth to the municipalities, he wants to get the commission to turn over the Blue Moon Ordinance, which I don't know if anybody's familiar with the Blue Moon Ordinance. The Blue Moon Ordinance is the non-sale of alcohol before 10:00 PM on, or, excuse me, 10:00 AM on Sunday. So, what I'm having is the sheriff to come into our next council meeting to go ahead and get the views of the Sheriff's Department, actually, I'm going to ask our own deputy lucky to be there with the permission of the sheriff, and then, once the decision's made by the Mayor's Council, bring it back to the board, our Board of Commissioners, to see if we would want to go ahead with this, or if we want to keep it as the way that the ordinance is right now. So, that'll be something we'll be able to discuss here in next month. Also, some good reports, got the turtle reports in, and Madeira Beach was number two in turtle hatchlings in Pinellas County, and I want y'all to think about the size of our beaches compared to Clearwater Beach, which was number one. Like I said, Madeira Beach was number two, St. Pete Beach was number three, so, you know, that goes out to say a lot of things about our public works people, because the reports were that Madeira Beach actually had less false crawls than any other beach in Pinellas County, which means the guys are out there picking up the trash, moving the chairs, so the turtles can get up there and do their things. I think overall, in Pinellas County, there was 96,000 hatchlings. So, that's a record year for Pinellas County and the state of Florida, so that's actually outstanding. Also, and we'll go into tourism, good numbers there. From this time last year to right now, overnight visitors are up 7.3%, room nights are up 7.1%, and the economic impact is up 11.5%, making it now for 2015, $548,132,500. Also, tourism right now employs 96,000 people in Pinellas County. So, tourism is very, very important to the economic impact of Pinellas County and Madeira Beach. I think that is, that's about it, in my mind. Does any other commissioners have any reports or correspondence?
No.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, I sent out an email earlier today, I know it was late in the day, so you may not have seen it, but I wanted to take a couple of minutes of your time tonight to talk to you about some of the quasi-judicial questions that have been raised over the past eight weeks or so, specifically with regard to one of the bigger projects that has been going on. You'll remember that in late December, I gave the commission some advice relative to quasi-judicial matters, and that advice was that you should refrain from any expert they contact with a developer, its agents and attorneys, as well as anyone else, including residents and the planning commission members, when the issue relates to quasi-judicial matters that the commission will eventually consider and act upon. I followed that up in an email on January the 8th, reminding you of that, because there had been some additional concern as to whether or not everybody understood exactly what I was talking about at the December meeting, so I wanted to put it in black and white. Tonight, I've handed that email out to you, a copy of it, just to set forth, you know, that information again. The basis of that advice was a couple of different things. One was the statute that deals with expert they contacts with public officials. I've also given you a copy of that statute, 286.0115, and I've also provided you with the division or chapter of your own code dealing with quasi-judicial proceedings. The reason I gave you the statute and your code provisions, because I wanted to basically go back to my email and my advice to you in December and early January, and the reasons why I was giving it to you. And you'll remember in the email, I quoted your own code telling you that, and I'll just read it out loud, and I'm reading from your code. An expert communication or site visit shall be disclosed by the city official who was a party there too, at the commencement of the hearing and shall include the substance of the communication or site visit, as well as the identity of the person, group, or entity from whom the communication took place. Persons with opinions contrary thereto shall be given a reasonable opportunity to refute or otherwise respond to information acquired by the communication investigation, site visit, or expert opinion. And then I've ended my email to you, was the purpose of my advice that I gave you was to you, to avoid you having to make this disclosure, specifically to keep a list of everyone that you're talking to, everything that they said, when they said it to you, and the reasons why they said it to you, and make that available to the public when the quasi-judicial hearing takes place. I thought in giving you that advice, I could protect you from all of that correspondence, the email, the contacts that you were getting, because now that you have them, and now that you've read them, you need to disclose them at the quasi-judicial hearing that's coming up in the Holton Project on March 16th. I was also asked to, to comment on the reasons why this is a quasi-judicial proceeding versus a legislative proceeding. There was some belief that maybe that was just a decision that was made by me, or was made by the city attorney, I mean, the city manager, or was made by somebody else in city staff, and, and I can tell you that it was basically driven or guided by me as to the reason why it's quasi-judicial. And frankly, the reason I did that was because that's what the law is, and the law has been that way since 1993, when the Supreme Court issued its opinion of Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County versus Snyder. That was a zoning case, but it went to the basics of what we need to think about when we're determining when we're reviewing an application, is it legislative or is it quasi-judicial? And I just want to read a couple of sentences from that opinion. So, this is the Supreme Court giving you this opinion. It is the character of the hearing that determines whether or not board action is legislative or quasi-judicial. Generally speaking, legislative action result in the formulation of a general rule of policy, whereas judicial action results in the application of a general rule of policy. So, if you were making a decision that would affect every property in the city, that would be a general rule of policy, and it wouldn't be specific. When you're dealing with a specific site, and you're applying specific facts to that site, well, then it becomes quasi-judicial. So, with, with that knowledge of the Supreme Court decision, that was the reason why I was directing you down that path, and that is what, you know, other lawyers doing, this type of work would advise you of the same, that although you have the right to talk to these people, gather information, you just need to disclose it at the meeting that's coming up, and we really don't want to get into a situation as to whether, an argument, whether it's legislative or quasi-judicial, when the Supreme Court has already given us that direction. So, hopefully, that gives you a little bit more background as to this project that's coming up, this Holton Project, and by the way, we can't get into specific details about that, because you're going to hear that on March 16th, and you're to base your decision solely upon the testimony and evidence that you receive at that hearing, but you're going to have lots of other developments that are going to be coming down the road here in the next six to eight months, some big, big projects like the Holton Project. So, hopefully, that will help you out, and I'm always available, of course, to answer your questions or emails when you send them, but it was, the direction I gave you was basically to protect you, and to protect the commission, the commission as a whole, and the city for any possible liability that would result from expert communications that weren't necessarily disclosed at the hearing that's going to be coming up. So, I know that when, that last meeting, we discussed that, I think Commissioner Lister basically said, you know, well, thank you, that gives me the knowledge now that I either need to keep track of all of it, or I don't need to necessarily talk to all these residents because of the fact that I can hear them at the commission meeting when it's considered by the commission. So, if, are there any questions from any of you relative to the reasons why we are doing what we're doing, or what you can do as commissioners?
I, I, I'm sorry, I do have one question. How come this property is under quasi-judicial, but the Barefoot Beach was not?
The Barefoot Beach was quasi-judicial.
Really? Nobody ever told me not to do anything.
Well, it's, you weren't prohibited from going to a neighborhood meeting. I advised the commission that they should not be doing that on this Holton Project, but obviously, when you went to that neighborhood meeting, if that's what you're referring to, the reasons, if I would have known that, Tom, I wouldn't have gone to the neighborhood meeting, kind of thing. You know, all to correct that is to basically advise, you know, the commission as a whole, that when you went to that meeting, this is, you know, what you heard, this is who talked to you about it, and once those disclosures are made pursuant to the statute and your code, that would basically cure it.
Okay. I just wanted, because I attended all the Barefoot Beach neighborhood meetings and all the planning meetings.
There's nothing in the statute or your code that prohibits you from doing that.
Even with this one?
Even with this one.
So, we could have attended the planning meetings?
Yes, but I advised you not to. And the reason I advised you not to is because I didn't want you to have to come forward and say that you've made your decision based upon what you heard at the commission, the planning commission meeting, versus what you're going to hear at your commission meeting.
Okay.
Mr. City Attorney, has the city, right now, been to any exposure from any emails or anything sent out on either project?
There have been a lot of emails that have gone out, and yes, I'm concerned about emails that may have come from commissioners, or you as the mayor, if you had sent them out, it does expose the city-
To a lawsuit.
-to possible lawsuits from the developer, if the development fails, or is denied when it moves forward, because there's, there's this thought process that there was some collusion behind the scenes, or that one of the commissioners, or you as the mayor, were biased in, in moving forward with that particular application, so I would caution you as the mayor, the vice mayor, and you commissioners on sending out correspondence that would either reflect the vote that you're going to take, or what action that you're going to take at that meeting, that type of thing. That should all be done from the dais at that meeting, it shouldn't be done prior. And I'll give you a perfect example, in Tarpon Springs a number of years ago, one commissioner didn't want the Walmart to go in place near the Anclot River Bridge, was a heavily fought hearing, the hearing started at 6:00, and it went until 7:00 the next morning, but one of the pieces of evidence to get one of the commissioners from not being able to consider or vote, was a photograph of the commissioner holding a sign that said basically, "No Walmart" on the property in traffic, before the meeting took place. And so, those are the types of things that make a perfect case for a lawyer challenging the bias of the commissioner when hearing their project, so we want to avoid that.
I'd like to just make a statement. Today, I received an email from a friend of mine, and I was very upset about it, and I'd like to point out that this kind of nonsense, this stuff that's going on with these emails, think how much time that takes of the city manager. He's got a lot of work to do, and he certainly doesn't need 22 phone calls about some email when, so, you know, when, when people are thinking about sending out emails, just think about the surrounding area, what you're causing to happen, instead of helping, you're hindering, you know? So, I think that I would think about that if I was going to send out an email. I never get any emails, it's a good thing. I got really upset when I got this one today, and so, I hope that these email people think about what they're doing. Takes hours of his time, and I don't know that I appreciate that as a commissioner, as one of his bosses. He has to spend all his time answering the telephone, and these people are calling to find out from Shane just what's going on. It's, it's very disrespectful to the city manager, and it's very disrespectful to the citizens and the commission of this city. I don't know what you have to think on that comment, but you were sort of talking about it, so I thought that would fit in.
Thank you, Commissioner Schatz, and Mr. City Attorney. Keep any exposure to the city, I mean, if any commissioner has sent out emails or have talked to residents, if they came forward and brought that stuff to the city or made a public record, would that lessen the exposure?
Yeah.
Okay.
If, if, if you spoke to anybody, if you received any information from anybody, be prepared at that commission meeting on the 16th to let the applicant know, and this, your other commissioners know what you heard, and the reason for doing that is, is that then everybody hears, has the same information when you're deciding it, and then it gives the applicant the opportunity to basically put on their experts as to, well, that information that you received from that resident is false, and here's the reason why. They won't be able to do that. You may have the information in your head, you don't disclose it, they, they don't have the opportunity to present any evidence in rebuttal. So, that's really why the statute is directed that way, and your code reads very, very similar to the statute, that you are to disclose that at that hearing. So, bring your list, and bring your documents if you receive them.
Do I have other questions from the city attorney?
Mr. Mayor, if I can just comment, the, the one, and Commissioner Schatz did on it just a little bit, is, is that these developments are highly political, they're, they're yours to deal with, you have to answer to the public and get re-elected or not. I'm just a facilitator, so when these emails keep going through, it really brings me into the political arena as the city manager, and frankly, I don't, I don't belong on your stage. I just conduct the meeting, I don't get paid more or less if Jim Holton builds his restaurant and hotel, or if he builds a fish processing plant, you know? So, again, I, I'm starting, and, and some of this, I'm going to take responsibility for, because this quasi-judicial system is, is very complicated, it's, it's difficult to understand, especially if you don't have any familiarity with it. At, at one point, I encouraged you to go to plan commission meetings, not knowing that that was probably not okay, but the more that I understand it, the more I, I'm starting to get that, it, it's, and there's several courts through the approval, and, and it was in the plan commissions court to start with, and you stay out of their court until it comes to you, now it's in your court, and, and people stay out of your court, and then you guys are the, the final approval, so, I'm, I'm starting to understand it, I, I think you guys are starting to understand it. This is all, this is new stuff, and this is big stuff, this, these are the biggest decisions a commission in Madeira Beach will probably make in a, in a heck of a long time, so, rest assured, it's going to go slow, you don't have to be pressured into anything. The next vote now is, hell, almost over a month away, but once, once the, you know, you get staff involved and, and copies of emails start going out, Amy's got to collect all that stuff, and it, it really does log down. The reason why I'm asking for a, hopefully, a tentative workshop is, we're all drowning, I mean, we're, we're dying. We just don't have enough staff to put up with, not put up with that, because that's what we're here to do, but it, it certainly is unnecessary, and so, you know, we all have a job to do, and we'd appreciate it if it's just, you guys are the politicians, and you let us facilitate, and leave it at that. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Manager, you know, one of the things, I had a discussion with you earlier, and there's two commissioners that are sitting on this commission that hired you, and that's Commissioner Lister and myself, and, you know, before it was Ms. Reynolds, Ms. Vanderbilt, and Ms. Oakley, that were the other commissioners that are sitting on the town that hired you, but one of the things that were discussed in your hiring, and that were brought forth, was redevelopment in the City of Madeira Beach, and that was made quite out there to the, the residents of the city, and I thought we heard positive things, so, you don't have to apologize about anything.
Well, the part that I didn't understand was the quasi-judicial thing-
Right, I understand that.
And, and Tom, and Tom, and Tom's done a very good job of tutoring me on that, and, and some of it makes sense to me, and some of it doesn't, but, you know, there's a lot of things in, in city government that doesn't necessarily make sense, but we have to live by the rules, and, and so, these are the rules, and I agree with Tom's recommendations to you to, to limit our, our liability or our exposure, that, that certainly makes sense, we're a tiny city, and if it's, if we got sued for 10 or 20 million bucks, our, our flexibility and our, our financial situation certainly changes, and so, I certainly understand from a legal perspective why he's doing that. From a political perspective, if, you know, it, it's different, and, and it's hard for you guys, it, I can't imagine what it was like to have a $100 million development going to happen in your town, and somebody call you, and you say, "I can't, I can't talk to you." That's tough to do, but they can come to the hearing, you have to wait for the ball to be in your court before you engage that, and now I kind of understand that, so, this is a new process for us all, I, you know, no one should go home feeling bad tonight, I think we're all on the same page now, and now the ball's in your court, it certainly will be on March 16th, so.
I would just like to say one more thing. Thank you, Tom, I really appreciate you taking the time tonight to do this.
Sure.
I did some research over the weekend, just to find out how many cities were dealing with the same problems that we do with understanding the quasi-judicial, and there are a lot of workshops out there at cities, and that's really why I thought it would be good for us to have a better understanding as a board. There's also going to be a workshop with the Florida League of Cities on the quasi-judicial. So, I think as more development comes in, apparently, we're going to have more of these meetings, so we may screw up the first one. But we'll try not to do the second.
It took years, we don't want to mess up the first-
Is that the Samantha girl coming out in you?
No, that's a Rome, Georgia.
Okay.
Where, where at, honey?
All right, Mr. City Attorney, is there anything else? Mr. City Manager, are you done, or do you have any reports for us?
Well, no, I just, I appreciate your understanding, I'm, I'm glad, you know, again, I've, I've said it at the plan commission meeting, you know, you're either for it or against it, but at the end of the day, we want something to happen on that piece of property, it's a prime piece of property, it's the entrance to the city, we need to do something spectacular there, but it needs to, to fit, and, and I, I certainly concur with that. That was relatively the sentiment, I, I thought, that, you know, it, it's just got to fit the feeling of, of Madeira Beach. Without playing Eric, my, you got a lot coming up in the next six to 10 months, I mean, you guys are going to have your plates full, you're going to go from this one to another one to another one, right in a row, and, like I said, you're going to reinvent the north side of the town. You, you've got your plates full, and so, I, and when your plate is full, ours is, ours is pretty full as well. So, you know, again, I, I've cried in my Cheerios before, but if we can not invent anything for the workshops for the next couple of months and, and really concentrate, these, these are major, major, major developments. The next ones coming are going to be bigger than the one that you're going to have to deal with on the 16th, so, be ready for it, and it's going to be a series of meetings, be ready.
And this is where you can say what you think, yes or no.
Correct.
That's it, that's it, the way I understand it, and you know what I think about, oh, that sunshine stuff, you know, the way, well, anyway, this is where you may, this is where you say yes or no, right here, and that's all, that's the end of the subject.
Do I understand correctly, Tom, at the meeting on the 16th, and then we'll be hearing the presentation and everything else, we can't present anything that we have that says why we should or should not vote for this? And we have to vote based on the application?
You have to ba, base your vote on the testimony and evidence that's presented to you at that meeting, that's what you, it's not on your own personal investigation, and you should not be stepping off the dais to testify, and you should not be adding information to, you know, the presentation made by staff and by the applicant. So, I'm not sure if that answered your question, but if, if, for example, you've done a site visit yourself, you need to be, you need to make the other commissioners know that you've done that site visit, when you did it, and what you saw, and if you, if you receive documentations from the public, your residents, you need to make that available to the commission, and, and then you need to discuss or disclose any conversations you've had with anyone.
I understand, but I don't understand, is that as a rule, we get to voice our opinions?
Right.
Are we going to be able to voice our opinions?
Absolutely. And the way that'll be done, obviously, is, is after the presentation by staff, and the presentation by the applicant, and the presentations and testimony by your residents and the public, that public portion of the hearing will be closed, and then there would be a motion made to approve the development agreement as it is, approve it with changes, deny it, and then you'd move on to the zoning and so forth, but each, each one of those steps, you'll have the opportunity to discuss amongst yourselves what your thoughts are in every part of that, and you'll remember that when you adopted the changes to your code a couple of years ago with regard to development agreements, you've added in an extra step, if you need it, and that is, is that if you see the development agreement and you believe that there's a change needed to it, you can say to the applicant as a whole, not individually, you know, this is what needs to be done to the development agreement, and go back and get it done, and so, we would have another commission meeting to look at the development agreement again. So, you can recommend changes, and those would either be acceptable or not. So, absolutely, lots of discussion, that's your time to do it.
Okay.
Yep.
I just want to make sure we're not going to be top five guys.
No, you're the judge and the jury, and so, as the judge and the jury, you'll, it's all five of you-
The buck stops right here at this table.
Yeah, you'll have the opportunity to hear from your other commissioners what their thoughts on a particular thing, and they, they may say something that's, you say, "I never thought about that," you know, so, yeah, lots of discussion. Right.
Well, and to, not to elongate the meeting any longer, but Commissioner Schatz hit, hit two out of the three, so you can say yes, no, or with contingencies, and so, you know, we kind of, you know, staff presented a development agreement that fits your code. Hell, Tom, tell me what version we're on now, we're probably on version-
Five or six.
Five or six, right? So, that, that's, that, that document has evolved just with that one commission, or that one group of people looking at it, you may say, "Sure," and, and they have a non-binding recommendation to you, you can, you know, take it or leave it. So, there's, there's plenty of room for negotiating, or for you to add or subtract content from that, that document, so the more- content from that, that document, so the more that I understand this now, now the ball is in your court, now it's time for you to play the game, is basically what it is, they, they played, and one, they, they forwarded it on to you, and now it's, now it's your shot, and so, if anybody needs explanation to anything, reading those development agreements is like, it's, it's painful, so, if, if anybody needs to sit down with either staff, the City Attorney, or whomever, we'd be happy to do that, but get a good working knowledge of that document in plenty, plenty of time, because, like I said, this is, you're, I don't envy your spots, you, you guys got some pretty heavy decision-making to make in the next six to eight months.
Any further questions from the State Manager?
No.
Now, State Clerk, anything from your end?
Just a reminder that, yes, the meeting will be on March 16th, because March 15th is Election Day, and their, the voting will take place in the chambers, we have both of our Commissioners for District 1 and 2 are unopposed, however, we do have a referendum item, as well as the presidential ballot.
Could we get a copy of that referendum?
Yes.
That'd be great, thank you.
Actually, Amy, that's it, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, why, why don't we put that on the, on the website, on the homepage, if you can do that, but we'll, we'll also send it out to you, I don't think it's, it's not one of those referendums with like five double negatives in it or anything like that, so you don't really need to decipher the verbiage, it's relatively straightforward.
I thought you kept it pretty straightforward.
We keep it simple, simple as possible.
Yeah, you remember that, you've adopted the resolution that sets forth the actual ballot language, and remember that the state statute says, the title can only be 15 words, and the, and the question could only be 75 words, and, so, it's, you've gone over that, it's not something new, but it's been many, many months since you've done that, so.
We forget everything the minute we walk out the door.
This is the one on the sale of-
Public property.
Of public property.
And if you remember, just so the public is aware, we did hold a, a public hearing, and we had zero attendance, and so, we decided not to have another one, just so that it's completely transparent, that we, we did stick to our word and offer educational seminars on the referendum.
All right, seeing no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 6:53.